July 1st, 2025. Please rise and join me in the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I got caught up in the moment having a full audience here. It was really good. I'm sorry if you please remain standing. I'd like to invite Pastor Michael Futrell to the podium for our invocation.
Will you bow with me for prayer? Heavenly Father, thank you so much for this evening. And Father, we just want to thank you for the freedoms that we have. And Lord, we want to thank you for being able to call Harrison home. And Father, I pray as businesses discuss tonight that you would give great wisdom to our mayor and our city council members. Lord, I pray that you would give them just integrity. I pray that you'd be with our citizens that call Harrison home, that you would keep them safe, keep our community safe. And I pray that you would continue to just bless the community that we live in. And Father, once again, Lord, we're so thankful for Harrison. And Lord, once again, bless our mayor, our council members, and our community members who came out to voice any concerns that they may have. I pray it be met with the gracious Spirit in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you, Michael.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Egner.
Here.
Mr. Abrams.
Here.
Mr. Samuels.
Here.
Mr. Doe.
Here.
Mrs. Van Cleve.
Here.
Mrs. Wilson.
Here.
Approved council meeting minutes from June 17th, 2025.
Mr. Mayor, J.W. Wilson moves to approve a mess printed.
We have a first, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Egner.
Upstaying.
Mr. Abrams.
Upstaying.
Mr. Samuels.
Upstayed.
Mr. Doe.
Yay.
Mrs. Van Cleve.
Yay.
Mrs. Wilson.
Yay.
Mr. Wilson.
Yay.
Everybody was on vacation.
It's not our fault.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move into presentations. And I would like to invite the American Legion to the podium.
Mr. Mayor, you need to go up there too also right now. First check we're giving out is, Jeanne will say, is to the Harrison Mayor's Fund.
The first check we have to give out tonight is to the Harrison Senior Center. Ms. Becky.
Nope. I had them in a different order.
Oh, wow, sorry. Here we go, come on, Mayor. They're all gonna get them sooner or later, right? So, Mr. Mayor, sorry about that. I had something else on my mind. So tonight, our Jaeger Benson charity account is gonna give you our monthly donation to help families in the city of Harrison and Southwest local for $2,500.
Reason I did that, I've gotten going from the smallest donation to the largest.
Gotcha.
Now we'd have someone from the Harrison Senior Center come up, please.
Becky and Becky. Becky and Fran. So, tonight, we're going to give the Harrison Senior Center a donation from the Jaeger Benson charity account to help with the many programs that they set up for our seniors in Harrison. And we're gonna present you with a check for $2,500.
Thank you very much.
Fran, you got 10 minutes to say whatever you want.
I just want to say thank you very much and to let you know how much this will mean for us to be able to put a big screen TV up for our videos, like we had the slide shows at the veterans program. It means a lot for us and we appreciate it. And I'd like to also invite seniors out there in Harrison to come check our center out. We have a really good time, lots of friendships, and we're just inviting you.
Absolutely. Becky does a great job with our senior center, whether it's baseball games, taking them to restaurants, all kinds of different stuff. So we do encourage any senior that's in the community to stop down and visit.
Next up is the Miami Town Historical Society.
And we're gonna present this check to Diane Bachman. This is to help you with the celebration next year. You're gonna buy all new grave markers, flag markers for the veterans. We have around 300 identified and we believe there's a couple hundred more in our cemetery. And we want to be able to identify all those veterans. So, on behalf of the Jaeger Benson Memorial Charity Fund, Memorial 199 Charity Fund, the charity committee granted you a donation of $2,638.
And last but not least, if we could have a representative of Harrison lacrosse come up. And obviously, they're last, but they're getting the largest check.
As anybody, if you don't know, Harrison lacrosse is kind of a new sport in Harrison for our youth. I think you've been in Harrison for like four years.
This is our fourth year.
Yeah, fourth year. We've helped them out in the past. We know the great work that they're doing and we know it's hard to raise funds. And so the charity board met on your request and they're going to give you a check for $5,000. So for tonight, our total donations just for tonight is $12,638. So all these donations come from the American Legion Charity Fund. If you're a 501(c)(3) and you would like, I'm not on the board, I just write checks. But if you would like a donation, you can contact me through my email and send it to me. I will forward it on to the charity board. But if you have to be a 501(c)(3) and you need to be in Ohio, so, there we go.
The American Legion does an excellent job supporting all the community, the entire community, whether it's lacrosse, whether it's Miami Town Cemetery Association, whether it's our senior center or fire department, what have you. They are, they're absolutely incredible. Not only the American Legion VFW does a great job, we received a check, Mayor's Fund received a check in the mail for $1,000 today. And we do, I want to take the time to thank them. Mayor's Fund distributes about $65,000 to $7,000 a month to help families in need. And this goes a long way towards helping those things. So thank you very much. Greatly appreciate you guys. With that, we'll go ahead and move into inviting guests and visitors. And first, I'd like to invite Ms. Julie Enderhees up, Heart for Homes, 513 Realty, and she's a chamber ambassador. Hey, Ms. Julie, how you doing this evening?
Good, how are you guys?
Doing real good, thank you.
Glad to have me here. So yeah, like you said, I'm Julie Enderhees. This is my third year as ambassador with the Greater Harrison Chamber of Commerce. And just wanted to give a few little updates and exciting news. So again, I'm Julie Enderhees with the ambassador. So the first up is the Fourth of July parade to come join us this Friday, starting at 4:00, the Fourth of July. I, along with some of the chamber members, will be walking in there, including the Coffee Peddler, Christ Loving Hands, Paul Hall and Association Insurance, Life Springs Community, City of Harrison, Harrison Police and Fire. And I'm sure I'm missing some of the other Harrison chambers, but that's exciting for all of us that'll be in there. So please come join. After the parade, there's gonna be games, live music, I heard the cornhole tournament, and then fireworks at dusk. So it's gonna be a great time. And a big thank you to the Harrison Recreation Commission and amazing volunteers for outstanding, this wonderful evening celebration that they do. We need everyone's help. The annual chamber awards, we do every year. Nominations are open, they're due August the 1st. So this individual helps promote growth and prosperity in the communities over the years. Honors have celebrated through recognition banquets, professional video spotlights, publicity through the chamber and local media. And again, we need your help. So you can get on the greaterharrisoncc.com and nominate. So we just really need those votes tonight, or in by August the 1st. So let's recognize the people and businesses making a real difference in Harrison. We also have some upcoming events. On July the 8th, we have a member meeting at noon. August the 1st, again, is the deadline. August 28th is open from, it's open to any chamber non-member. The after-hours event in this, again, August 28th at the Harrison Trail Health Campus. So again, you can get on the chamber website and anybody is welcome to join. It's a great networking, just learning about communities, our new businesses. So it's a great time, we do them, we try to do them a couple months here and there. We had one at Hearth Brewing. So, and then September 8th is the 9th Annual Golf Outing. So again, if you get on the chamber website, please come join the golf outing. And we also'd like to recognize the business of the month, that July is the Weber's Farm Market and it's located at 6040 Kilby Road. Make sure you stop in and get some fresh produce, they're open daily from 9:00 to 6:00. And one quick last update from your trusted neighbor Realtor, exciting news for Ohio's first-time home buyers. Interest rates just made a significant drop today. So this could be the perfect opportunity to make your move. Sellers, take note that since interest rates have dropped for buyers, that sellers, and that was the time. So contact me, I'd love to help. Again, I'm just your trusted local Realtor here in the neighborhood, just making a difference in everyone's lives and helping. So I appreciate everyone's time. If there's anything I can do, as again, as ambassador, I'd love to help anybody can.
Thank you, Ms. Julie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I greatly appreciate the invite. Unfortunately, can't walk with you in the parade, but I do appreciate the invite, so thank you. Awesome. Very good. Ms. Shannon from the Harrison Public Library. Well, I guess Harrison branch of the Hamilton County Public Library.
Thank you. I just want to remind everyone, it's not too late to sign up for summer reading at the library. It's the Kids and Teen Program. It goes on through July 31st. And all kids and teens get a free tracker and a free book and also a coupon for two free Reds tickets while supplies last. They've been really popular with the Reds tickets. Ooh, I am so sorry, I think I touched the screen. Sorry about that, guys.
It's okay.
Okay.
We have ultimate control.
Oh, okay, awesome. Ooh, I've never done that, okay. Each week in July, we're gonna have a small STEM activity that children can drop in and it's with our homework helper, Ms. Ava. And there's, you can sign up in advance for that program on our website, which is chpl.org. That's chpl.org. We hope that some of you will join us on July 7th at 6:30 for an introduction to Tai Chi for adults. Registration is required. And then our big Harrison 500 Hot Wheels Matchbox Car Race is the July 16th. That evening, registration begins at 6:15 and the races begin at 7:00. It's always a good time. Registration is required for that as well. You can call or go on our website. And then lastly, does everyone know that the Harrison Library is a passport acceptance location? By appointment only, we offer both weekday evening and Saturday options. If you're interested in taking advantage of this service, please call the Harrison Library at 513-369-4442, option 2. And that was all I have tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shannon, have a great evening. Appreciate you stopping by this evening. And I'd like to last but not least invite Steve Esterman to the podium. He would like to talk about parking on Circle.
Hi, Steve Esterman, live at 167 Circle Drive. Lately, we've been having a lot of issues with getting our mail and a few other things. And it's basically, the no parking signs are on the side of the street where there are no mailboxes. I talked to you guys a while back, I'm not gonna say how long. Rob followed me home one night after the meeting, I don't know if you remember. Right, right, right. But there's a story behind why the signs are where they're at. And some of you may remember it, some of you may not. But when they put those signs in, they were on the east side of the street where they're... I'm sorry, they were on the west side of the street where the mailboxes are. And I know they said they wanted the mailboxes on the inner circle going around the neighborhood. Well, they were on the west side. And I will admit, when that first, the owners of the first of the house next to me, first owners, the guy was so lazy, he was unbelievable. He came down to the city council meeting here and asked for him to be moved to the east side. It was basically because he didn't want to walk across the street that far to his house. That's honest to God's truth. If I'd have known he was coming down here that day, that many years ago, I'd have been down here too. I mean, the guy's nuts. But that's not the thing right now. Thing is, I think our mail lady has taken a lot of heat over it. And she's a real sweetheart. We've been, as far as getting the mail delivered, past few years, I think that's one reason why it's never been a lot of people down here pushing at it. And now it's starting to turn a little different. I know when Rusty was our mailman over there, if it was blocked, you didn't get your mail. Then when Rusty retired, we've got Melissa, and, well, she's a personal friend of ours, family friend. But she hustles. She does not want to take mail back. If somebody's parked there, she gets out. Post office rearranged their deliverers, we no longer have her. We've got Joyce. Joyce is a sweetheart, she'll get out. Sometimes she will, sometimes she won't. And she leaves little notes on the mail, "Please move your car back, please move your car back." I've talked to Joyce and she said, is there, she asked me, "Is there anything you can do? Can you do anything?" I said, "I can go down to the city council and talk to them." She said, "Would you please?" I said, "Sure." So that's one reason I'm here. I just talked to her yesterday. And she was, I told her I was coming down, she was happy. And I said, "I'm gonna ask them to move the street signs back over to the east side." She said, "Oh my God, thank you." And I don't think it's a post office issue, you know, because they'll tell you, if your mailbox is blocked, we don't have to deliver your mail. It's true. So it's not a post office issue. It's kind of a community Harrison issue.
Okay, did you have another item that you wanted to touch on real quick?
Uh, yeah, I did, but...
We just need to make it short.
Okay. The other, the only other one I did last fall, they came around, were marking off the utilities and stuff on our, on Circle Drive. I asked the guy, "Hey, what's going on?" He said, "They're gonna pave your street." Was that true or is it still gonna happen?
When is Circle on the calendar? I was gonna say.
Fall.
It'll be this year. It'll be this year.
Okay.
It'll be this year that it'll be completed.
Okay.
We already have though, this already counts.
Yeah. I didn't think that we hadn't set days yet, but it'll be this year because it is on the list to address this year.
Okay, the only thing I got to say is, when Rob looked at the parking last time, we talked afterwards and he said, "I see no reason why we can't move this street signs back over to that side." I said, "Cool." And he even admitted that, "Hey, it's gonna open up more parking." It will.
Yeah, I'll have to have a conversation with Rob and then Chief Lindsay with the police department. And then we'll talk with Andy in the public works department, see if we can. If there is no reason, I don't see why we wouldn't move them, you know, park, no parking on one side.
Well...
Obviously, we'll have to mail out notices to make sure that we notify everybody. But we'll start working on it.
I think my neighbor here was wanting to talk about the same thing. But the reason for the talk about the paving of the street, I would say, if they're gonna pave the street and you guys are willing to move them, why don't they just do it when they pave the street?
Well, I think, I don't think that's a complete reconstruction on Circle, is it? So... Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, just pull them and post them, so. But we'll, we'll have a conversation about it.
Okay.
So, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Wait a minute, you know, you mentioned that mailbox problem. My wife and I, when we moved on Harmony, we had the same problem except it was our neighbors parking in front of our mailbox. So we took, we took the mailbox and moved it to the other side of the driveway where they had to block my driveway to block my mailbox. And that ended, that ended the problem.
Well, here's the thing though. I understand what you're saying, but the, our mail lady doesn't come until 1:00 in the afternoon. So that means most of the people on the street probably are at work and it's not their cars.
I know.
People coming in, they don't care if they block your mailbox.
Well, so I say, it was the same thing with me. It was the neighbors that would park in front of my house and block my mailbox. So I just moved the damn thing to the other side of the driveway and they'd have to block my driveway to block my mailbox. That eliminated that problem.
We'll have a discussion about it, see what we can do. Thank you very much. Okay, that was our last visitor. Now we'll go ahead and move into the business session. The first item on the agenda is to vote on a resolution adopting the annual tax budget, which we had a public hearing for prior to this meeting, for the year 2026 for the city of Harrison and submitting the same to the county auditor. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
We have a first and a second, any discussion? Not hearing any, roll call?
Mr. Abrams.
Yay.
Mr. Samuels.
Yay.
Mr. Doe.
Yay.
Mrs. Van Cleve.
Yay.
Mrs. Wilson.
Yay.
Mr. Wilson.
Yay.
Mr. Egner.
Yay.
Okay, the next item is to vote on an ordinance amending the amounts appropriated to various funds of the city of Harrison. Motion to approve?
I'll second.
We have a first and a second, do we have any discussion?
Mayor, real quick, there's a couple of items on here for these appropriations. The biggest one for $180,000 is actually movement of some grant funding that the city received. We're transferring that to the CIC for them to manage the grant process for the facade grants. So the city received two grants, one for $50,000, one for $130,000, and those are being transferred to the CIC. So it's really just a transfer of funds. We have a $44,000 appropriation for conceptual design of the police building. And the final one is a $25,000 appropriation for a gate and opener for the ETA entrance to the community center.
Very good, roll call?
Mr. Samuels.
Yay.
Mr. Doe.
Yay.
Mrs. Van Cleve.
Yay.
Mrs. Wilson.
Yay.
Mr. Wilson.
Yay.
Mr. Egner.
Yeah.
Mr. Abrams.
Yay.
And that's a great reminder. So the community center has an entrance from ETA over on the side, from the main entrance on George Street. We used to have a gate there. When the school went through their construction phase, we took that down to alleviate some pressure on Broadway. And it is now time to put that gate back up. With the playground out there, with the pickleball courts, with the tennis ball courts, and...
Splash pad going in.
And the splash pad projected to go in at any time. We need to get traffic away from that area. There's too many young kids that are running around. And while I love little kids, you can't trust any of them to be observant of the vehicles that are driving by. So we will be putting a gate back up there as soon as we can get that thing in here. So that gate is long overdue and it will be going up hopefully within the next month or so. So I just want to start talking about it now to warn everybody. If you come through ETA, through the community center to go up Broadway, that will be cut off here soon. With that, we'll go ahead and move into the reports. And I guess I could have said that during my report. But now I'll talk about all my other announcements, so. The city continues to look for Economic Development Director. HR team has started pre-screening some of the resumes that we have received. But I encourage anybody that has an interest in the Economic Development Director position to submit a resume and cover letter. You can email it directly to myself or to our HR director, Ally, and she will work with you on setting up an interview. Starting on August 5th, the August 5th council meeting, the public speaking session is going to change. While we'll still have presentations by different people, whether it's the Chamber of Commerce or the library, the public speaking session will move to 7:15. The strategy is really to change this purely to a business meeting. I guess that's the way it was for up to 15 years ago and some changes were made. What we're gonna do is we're gonna take that and put it back at 7:15. So the public speaking session will be from 7:15 to 7:30. Each guest will have three minutes to talk. And all the sign-up sheets will be at the receptionist desk or online. Those will all be updated with the accurate information. But once it, once we get to 7:30, that's when we'll begin the actual city council session. But the public speaking will be from 7:15 to 7:30. And once again, that starts on August 5th. The Fourth of July, it's gonna be a great day for the Fourth of July. Obviously, Julie talked a little bit about the parade and all the events and I'm sure we'll have more, so I'm not gonna steal too much thunder here. But I do want to invite everybody down to the, to the City of Harrison Recreation Commission Fourth of July events down here. The parade's gonna be fabulous, the events are gonna be magnificent. I'll be stomping around all evening, so I look forward to seeing everybody. With that, at the same time, excessive heat. Obviously, we have a little bit of a cold spell at 86 degrees as opposed to 95. But I encourage everybody, make sure that you're, you're weather aware, that you're drinking plenty of fluids, that you stay out of the direct sunlight if you, if your flesh burns like mine. But I do, I encourage you to stay alert to your, the way you're feeling, especially in this heat, because it can sneak up quick. If your air conditioning at your house breaks down or you have problems, please reach out to us at the community center. Just like in the winter months when we have extreme cold, we open up the community center for shelter. We will do the same in extreme heat. I don't want to just set days when it's open, but if you reach out to me, we will make sure that you're taken care of. So please, once again, just reach out to the community center. You can call the community center direct and they'll patch you through to me. Or my cell phone is on the city website, so feel free to call me. Our committee meetings. I had a discussion with council this evening, just because we have been getting some good attendance to our committee meetings, as well as organize them in a way that all council members can listen in to our committee meetings. We're gonna move our committee meetings to council chambers. That way, we can make sure that we have more enough room for all committee meeting members, council members, and community members to attend our meetings. So starting anywhere from 4:30 to, I guess, 6, 5:30, all the committee meetings will be in council chambers. Another touch on weather real quick, probably should have organized these a little bit better. What, we had two, three inches of rain in 15 minutes the other day, I guess, I think last Friday or Saturday. And it seems that we continue to get these huge downpours. Obviously, they can lead to other problems, whether it's flooding in our streets, flooding in yards. We had a sinkhole over at Jefferson and Dare, I believe is where it was, Jefferson and Dare. Obviously, that's a little exceptional circumstance, but please be aware as you're driving around, be cautious. Don't enter high water. Try to watch for holes in the road, obviously, might be a little bit difficult if it's full of water. But try to be aware of what's going on. And if we have high... And if we have high water signs up, or tape and cones blocking in an area, please do not cross it. It means caution, it means there's danger, and it would be wise not to enter that area right after we were made aware of a sinkhole, and put up ribbon and cones, and not only one layer, but two layers. Uh, somebody decided to walk in there, and the ground is incredibly unstable, especially with sinkholes. So, please do not enter those areas. And we will address them. If you bring it to our attention, we will come out and visit to make sure everything's working properly. And then, uh, the last item I wanted to touch on is, um, the VFW has a Thank a Vet Day, uh, this Saturday, I believe. And I encourage everyone to stop out. They actually have helicopter rides and all kinds of good stuff going on, so uh, take some time to stop out at the VFW on Saturday. And, um, Thank a Vet. So, that's the last item. Yeah, that's the last item that I have. Mr. Law Director? Very good. Mr. Wilson?
I had a report, but I wanna thank the mayor for covering it for me. I was gonna report on the streets and, uh, the sinkhole, uh, the flooding on, uh, Hearth Brewery in Linus', uh, Legacy, uh, there. Um, I was gonna explain about the, all the trees that were down, and the fire department did a great job, so Mr. Mayor, thank you very much, you gave a great report.
Jerry, I apologize for stealing all your thunder. Mine was really about not entering the area. So, uh-
I'm done.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Mr. Egner?
I have a brief report, Mayor. Um, we had a tech and media, uh, committee meeting tonight. Um, Empath is working, uh, on a link between the website and, uh, our social media account called The Source. Um, within the next couple of weeks, it'll be live, and you'll be able to, uh, when you see something on social media, it'll bring you back to the website, and the website'll take you to social media, try to, try to get our, all of our information out, um, all from one spot. And we're also working on a link, uh, on the website to, uh, display the civil, the civil service test results. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Abrams?
Mayor, nothing to report, um, in reference to the committee, but just, uh, wanted to welcome, uh, Tanner Dole. Um, it's nice to get some young blood up here, so, uh, welcome, uh, you know-
Appreciate it.
-the madness, um, to this. That's all I got, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Mr. Samuels?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I do have an update. Uh, we did have a finance committee on June 22nd. Um, as always, we did do a review of the, uh, revenues and expenses. Um, and, and normally, you know, I don't go into too much detail on this, uh, but we did review them. They seem to be in line with the overall budget. We're pretty comfortable with where we are through the month of May. Uh, looking forward to seeing the reports next month, because we'll get actually half-year results, um, and have a really good idea where we're at, where we need to be for the remainder of the year. Uh, the only issues that we're currently monitoring are just the water fund. Um, that's been an ongoing issue. We did take the action on the water rates. So we're just keeping an eye on that to make sure we're going in the right direction in the next couple of months. Um, another topic we had was the budget amendments. Uh, we talked about those before, so I'm not gonna go over them again. Uh, but that was approved by the finance committee. We did have a group from Enterprise Fleet Management, um, did come in, they did a presentation, uh, regarding a fleet management service and leasing option, uh, with some of the city's vehicles. Uh, much to Mr. Abrams', uh, dismay, the committee decided not to move forward with the option at this time, and that was a joke. I think, uh, the committee was pretty, pretty adamant on, you know, that, not moving forward with that. Not that it's a bad option, um, in the future, it could be an option, but right now, uh, the position we've put ourselves in with the city and the vehicles and things like that, we just didn't feel is the right thing to do at this point in time. Um, on the HR side of things, the health insurance renewal. Open enrollment is complete, so everybody is set up for their upcoming year worth of benefits. Um, there was a Willow Park grant application submitted, uh, and we got word that it was denied. The state audit is still ongoing. Um, that should be, uh, resolved here in the next month or so, so we should have an update on that with the next meeting. As reported in last month, Kim was working on the city's property and liability insurance renewal with Highland. Uh, she was actually able to secure a $6,000 reduction over the initial quote. Um, so we did see that reduction. Um, that's still a slight increase over what we're paying, but we did get a reduction over the initial quote. Uh, one update that Rita did pass along, the Wayne Scott Fetter Company is actually receiving a refund of $222,000. Um, and that will be reflected in our June receipts from Rita, so just something to keep your eye on. Or we'll keep an eye on it as that comes through, um, in June. Uh, also, it was mentioned that, uh, Mayor Grubbs has sought the, out the services of a development attorney for assist, for assistance on several developments within the city. Uh, the quarry property, the Dole property, and the Paradigm Development. Uh, this guidance will assist the city in developing various TIP agreements for the properties if we want to move in that direction. Also, one last thing that Kim did, provide a summary of the impact of the property tax, repeal that was being pushed through by, uh, voters. Uh, the measure has since failed to secure enough votes for the ballot this year, but could be pushed forward in future years. Um, so it's just something we'll keep an eye on, but we're just keeping an eye, you know, we understand where the property tax numbers are and how that would be impacted, and, um, you know, that definitely would have a huge, significant impact on services, and we'd have to learn or figure out a way around that, so.
So if that were repealed, it'd be about six, six and a half million dollars in our budget?
Yeah, I think it was about 6.2.
And, obviously, that would have a major impact on everything that we do. So it's just something to keep in mind, so.
Okay. Uh, one last thing, I do wanna welcome Tanner. I apologize for missing your meeting, but, you know, we were on a vacation last meeting, so I do apologize for that. Hope everything's going well. Um, and at the conclusion of the reports, I will be asking for an executive session.
I'll make that motion at the end of the reports. Mr. Dole?
Thank you, Mayor. I have no committees to report on, however, I would like to thank everybody for the warm welcomes to council. The directors have been great to work with so far, chiefs, uh, obviously the fellow council members, and you as well, Mayor. So, would like to thank everybody for that, and I will-
Very good. Mr. Dole, I'm sorry, I almost called you by your first name. Mr. Dole's done an excellent job jumping right in, not only sitting down with the finance director to understand the finances, but meeting with the different directors, so he understands what's going on in the department, so I thank you for the energy and everything, and jumping in here and getting, getting up to speed, so. Ms. Patty?
Yes. We had an economic development meeting tonight, and I just wanted to touch on a few things, if possible. Um, Paradigm is in the design and engineering phase for the Corner Brook property at this time. And also, I am excited to announce that the Dry Fork Road Warehouse has been fully rented out for a long-term lease with a pharmaceutical distribution company, and it'll bring approximately 300 jobs to the area. It's been sitting empty for a long time, and I know everybody's really excited to see that happen, so that is happening at this time.
It is finally full.
I'm sorry? Yes, they rented the entire building.
Whole facility. Probably within the next couple of months.
Yeah. They're meeting on July 14th to discuss things. For the activity report for the city, um, as expected, over the summer months, the numbers are currently down. If you have a nuisance violation that you would like to report, please continue to go to our city website to directly report that nuisance, and we will take a look into it for you. We also had a stormwater street meeting tonight. Um, we had a resignation of a current operator 3 job in our wastewater facility, and we will be posting a job and looking for an operator 3 to replace him at this time. So if you know anyone, you can send the mayor or myself, um, resume, and we will get them interviewed. Also, Dare Avenue, the storm sewers are completed by Jurgensen at this time, and they're currently digging the curbs, aprons, and sidewalks on the north side of, from state to Jefferson. So the Dare project is occurring as we speak, and then they'll move on to the Circle Drive once they complete this one. And that is all I have, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Patty. Ms. Jean?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to say that today, being the first Tuesday of the month, is be the one. So I did spend the day today at Sabre Warrior Village, um, in Hillsboro, Ohio. Um, it's a great facility that helps veterans and first responders, um, with, uh, post-traumatic stress. Um, if you're a veteran or a first responder, you can go to Sabre Warrior, it costs you nothing. Uh, they have a website, and you apply through there. Um, I did talk to the mayor tonight, that I have spoken with someone, um, from the Purple Heart Society, it would like to see the City of Harrison become a Purple Heart city. Um, I've got the, I know what we need to do, and, uh, I talked to the mayor and the other city council members, so we'll be, uh, proposing the paperwork at our next meeting. Um, and we will be, um, erecting signs after we are, um, approved, um, in the entrance and exits of the city, stating that we are now a Purple Heart city. And we'll be having a ceremony for that, uh, sometime in September, uh, naming the city a Purple Heart city. Um, this, uh, dedication will, um, occur, um, at the American Legion, because we actually have a Purple Heart memorial, uh, that sits in front of our American Legion, and we'll have more information as it, um, occurs. Also, if you have an unsuitable American flag, and you need it to be properly disposed of, um, the American Legion on Campbell Road has a collection box that sits right there on the driveway, it looks like a mailbox, you can put your flags in there, and we'll take care of them. Um, don't forget, the, uh, the 4th of July is coming up. The parade starts at 4:00 PM. The grand marshal is Jerry Smith. He is a 99-year-old Navy veteran. And he's gonna be the grand marshal. Um, after the parade, we'll be coming back to the community center for vendors, activities, music, food, I believe, games. I think the mayor's gonna be passing out some cookies. I'm on the cookie committee, too.
I am as well.
So, we'll all be passing out cookies sometime along the line. Not sure when, Kim hasn't told me yet, but I told her I would be here to help.
5:00 PM.
Cookies will be at 5:00 PM. Cookies at 5:00 PM. And then the night, uh, will end with fireworks. And hopefully, hopefully, people, everything goes all right this year. But when things don't go right, they don't go right, just roll with it, okay, because it's beyond our control.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make an announcement. Now, uh, we're not moving it. So, um, it will be on the 4th of July. The fireworks will be shot off, uh, hopefully at the right time.
At the right time, hopefully.
If it's a little bit late, they're still getting shot, so.
It's Friday night, you can sleep in on Saturday, hopefully. Um, also coming up are the hero banners that are on the line, um, Harrison Avenue down there in the district. Uh, there's limited banners, um, applications, so if you wanna get a banner up this time, uh, your application needs to be in by August the 1st. Uh, the, the application, uh, can be found on the city website. You fill that out, a check may payable to Frontier Signs for $45. You mail it to Frontier Signs or drop it off at their, uh, office. Uh, they will be put up in September. Uh, you need a high-resolution photo of the veteran. And, um, the Ameri, I'm proud to say that the American Legion makes a very nice donation, um, every year to keep the cost to the veterans down to just $45. So we make a donation every year to help keep the cost down. And I think... Yep. I think I got everything crossed off my list, Mayor. Thank you.
Very good.
I forgot one thing, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'm going to a meeting Wednesday night at 6 o'clock with Ray Acre's family, his wife, his brother, and one of his nephews. We're gonna figure out how we're gonna award a sign. We're gonna, the city council plans on, uh, rename, not renaming, but memorializing Ray, uh, by naming the Willow Park the Ray Acre Memorial Park. That's all.
Anything else?
Well, since you asked. Um, I would like to make a motion that we move to executive session per Ohio Revised Code 121 dot 22, Section G1, to consider the, uh, compensation of a public employee.
I'll second.
Roll call?
Mr. Dole?
Yay.
Mrs. Van Cleve?
Yay.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yay.
Mr. Wilson?
Yay.
Mr. Egner?
Yeah.
Mr. Abrams?
Yeah.
Mr. Samuels?
Yeah.